Good morning. Thanks, Lacey. Thanks for DSA for putting this together. Thanks to everyone for joining us for this latest installment of the Virtual Access Series from the Downtown Seattle Association. My name is Felix Benel. Today, we're spending time with the two candidates running for Seattle City Council Position Eight Alexis Mercedes-Rink and Councilmember Tanya Wu. I'll introduce each of them in just a moment. Councilmember Wu is the incumbent. She was appointed in January of this year to fill the vacancy made when Teresa Moscata was elected to the King County Council. Alexis Mercedes-Rink is the challenger. Both were the top-two finishers in the August primary. Now, Position Eight is citywide, and this election is for the remainder of Councilmember Moscata's original term, which concludes late next year. Thus, whoever wins this race in five weeks will get to do it all over again one year from now. I've been thinking a lot about elected officials and legacies and the outsized role that our leaders can play in any given era. You know, Governor Evans passed away last week, age 98. Charlie Royer died back in July. He held his memorial at Mohai just a few days ago. So I want to talk about leadership styles a bit later on, and we'll plan on getting to lots of issues this morning around downtown revitalization, public safety, and the city budget, of course. And political debates are all the rage this year, and some would say they've never been more popular and more consequential in decades. But to be clear, this isn't a formal debate that we're having here this morning. There's no timers and flashing lights, nor no formal rebuttals, and thankfully, no muted mics, although if my dogs start barking, I'll probably mute my mic. Today, the hope is to have more of a conversation and a chance to get to know the two candidates and where they stand and why, and do it through a downtown Seattle lens. And so with this in mind, let's formally introduce our candidates for Seattle City Council Position Eight. Alexis Mercedes-Rink is the Assistant Director for Policy Planning and Operations at the University of Washington. She previously held leadership or policy positions at the King County Regional Homelessness Authority and the Sound Cities Association. Councilmember Tanya Wu is one of two citywide council representatives, serving in Position Eight since being appointed earlier this year. She's a Seattle native and co-owner of the Luisa Hotel in the Chinatown International District and has been a neighborhood community advocate. Now, we have some questions that we prepared in advance, of course, and we'll get to audience questions as often as we can throughout the program. Please do submit your questions via the chat function, and we'll keep track of those. We'll bring those forward as they fit into the arc of the conversation. And before we begin any of these virtual access conversations, it's become a tradition, really, to start with a few data points. So let's do that today as well. And even though City Council Position Eight is citywide, we all know the role that downtown plays in the overall health of an entire city. For instance, downtown is home to roughly 55% of Seattle's jobs. With 108,811 residents, that's more than 12% of the city's population that lives downtown. Downtown is our regional center for the arts, culture, and tourism. Last month, downtown hotels sold 403,000 rooms, which is the second-highest total since the pandemic. Couple more fluffy facts here. Seattle Mariners are poised to have another peaceful and relaxing postseason, though tomorrow is Fan Appreciation Night, which my family didn't used to miss back in the Old Kingdom. And the 3-0 Seattle Seahawks are playing the Detroit Lions on Monday Night Football, but it's an away game, so we don't get those blimp shots, the beautiful downtown Seattle that I remember falling in love with those when the Seahawks were first on Monday Night Football 45 years ago. So I eagerly await Monday Night Football coming back to the city sometime, maybe during the playoffs. And last of all, DSA does not endorse candidates, but instead rates them on alignment, and DSA will be publishing its candidate scorecard for this race in a couple of weeks. All right, so let's get started here. And no one was asked to prepare any kind of a formal opening statement or to give a standard, kind of stumpy, sort of political opening statement, but we do want each of you to take time to introduce yourself and tell us why you want to run for Seattle City Council. And again, I don't have a timer. I'm not going to flash a red light or anything. So take as much time as you want within reason. And let's start with Alexis Mercedes-Rink.
Well, good morning, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Alexis Mercedes-Rink. I'm a renter and somebody who gets to work on a bus. And I went from waiting tables next to the Space Needle to working on policy at the UW Tower. And now I'm running for Seattle City Council to fight for a city that works for all of us. And in my work across communities, I've gained a reputation for bringing people together across the spectrum, bringing them together around solutions, but most importantly, making it happen. And I got my master's degree at UW, actually, at the Evans School of Public Policy. So it's been an interesting time being an Evans alum of sort, of course, thinking now about the life of Evans in this work. And since getting my master's degree, I've worked across 39 cities and with over 100 different organizations on the housing and health of our communities. And I was brought to this work because of my upbringing. Substance Use Disorder, prison, and homelessness affected my family. But I was given the tools that I needed to heal, thanks to my incredible grandparents, really great public school teachers, and afternoons at the Boys and Girls Club. And I'm here today as a living testament to when we invest in young people and working families, regardless of their beginnings, we can change generations. And division is everywhere. Our campaign is doing hard work to make sure that we unite Seattle. And we've brought together advocates and unions, the Democratic Party behind our campaign. And so I'm really excited to be able to serve this community and make sure that we are addressing affordability challenges, making sure that Seattle is welcoming, and fighting again for a city that works for all of us.
And maybe you answered this, but clarify, why this race? Why Seattle City Council? To do the kinds of things you're talking about?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm particularly focused on how we can work on the local level to address affordability challenges. So having spent pretty much my entire career working in the public realm, particularly on the local level, I bring a lot of expertise to the space about the nature of our human services and public health space. And so I've been really passionate about the local level. That's why I was interested in running for local office and making sure that we're doing the work to address the housing crisis while also bringing fiscal health to the city and making sure that our communities have the resources they need so everyone can live good lives.
All right. Councilmember Wu, same question for you. Why you want to run for Seattle City Council? Introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm a small business owner. My family owns Cow Cow Restaurant in the Chinatown International District. I grew up here in Seattle. I remember when downtown had a ride-free zone. I remember a couple of years ago, to help activate storefronts, we had the storefront activation plan. All these things, I've seen how they contribute to our community. I grew up in Beacon Hill. I now live in Raynor Valley, and I have really deep roots in the Chinatown International District. As you have heard, I'm a person of action. When I saw that housing was needed, I converted the Luisa Hotel into affordable housing. It's workforce housing. We're only charging our tenants a percentage of their income so that no one has to pay rent they cannot afford. And we converted a historical building that costs three times to renovate than building new. And so I believe that we can build more affordable housing in the city. If my family's able to do it, then we could, as a city, do it as well. And I'm working on legislation to do that. I'm also really interested in public safety. In early 2020, when our businesses were closing because of pandemic, I saw, especially in the Chinatown International District, how Trump anti-Asian heat has really affected my community, and also saw that there were a lot of protests happening in downtown Seattle. And so my group started Community Watch, which helped to bring hope to our small businesses, our residents, as well as our in-house neighbors. We walked every single night for a couple of years, and we went into encampments to try to connect with the resources. We go 12th and Jackson, we go Third Pike and Pine. These are all areas I'm intimately familiar with. We also really care about our seniors. We did things like senior escorts, senior self-defense classes, because Chinatown International District has 4,000 people who live there, 2,000 of which are seniors, who were afraid to go out after 4:00 p.m. midnight. They were doing circles around the parking lot next to their home because they were afraid to go to the park. And that is still the case. And so I think, you know, we need to do more in terms of public safety. On council, I voted to civilize the police department, to make our officers' wages competitive so we could hire the best in the region. We went from getting five applications a day to 15. So we could hire, able to hire highly-qualified people. We're seeing more lateral interest as well from other departments. I also voted in favor of soda and soap, because I believe, you know, while, you know, we've done soda and soap in the past, this is a brand-new piece of legislation. That's not a repeat of our past. We're making progress, moving forward. We're changing it. But we're going after the pimps and the johns, and we're also going after the drug dealers. This is a pre-trial conditional release, so that, you know, we're giving our officers more tools into the toolkit. Of course, this legislation won't be online for another 30 days, but during that time, the budget process, you will see that there's about 2 million to help people who are exploited from the sex trade. I'm also going to be fighting for more resources for lead, reach, we deliver care, to expand our shelters. I believe also that, you know, we have Third Pike and Pine, but we also have 12th and Jackson. We cannot just attack one area because it's the same people who move back and forth to both. We have to address both areas, and that's why I plan to fight for in the budget. So there's a lot of pieces of legislation I'm also working on. I'm working on cease and desist for Black homeowners from predatory solicitations. I'm also working on how can we save more trees? Maybe if we could put together a density bonus for people who save trees on their property, we could do both, build housing and save trees. I'm also working on other public safety legislation that I will reveal the next couple of weeks. I'm very excited about, based on my experiences. And the reason why I run is because I'm from a community that's considered one of the most endangered neighborhoods in America. And I believe, you know, if you're not at the table, you are on the menu. And as you can see, with the Chinatown International District, there were so many high-impact developments happening. We had I-5 cutting through the neighborhood, the Seattle Streetcar devastated 50% of Japantown businesses, Sound Transit came in and took out three blocks. We also have, you know, the Kingdoms, the stadiums that went in without any meaningful discussion with the community. And so when I saw that was still happening, it made me realize if this was happening in my community, this was happening in other parts of Seattle. So as you can see, I am not a politician or bureaucrat. I'm from community. I've been fighting for a voice for many communities. I'm most interested in how do we reach people furthest away from government and get them into the halls of power to amplify their voices. And one of the things I tackled was King County Regional Homeless Authority. Working in encampments and working alongside and watching this regional authority and how they work, I believe we need to streamline the leadership process. I totally back the ILA that was passed through council this past week. And how do we, I believe, the Regional Homeless Authority has failed us, and now we have to make it work, because I do believe regional approach is best. As you all know, Partnership for Zero, King County Regional Homeless Authority, Symmetra Initiative did not work, but we have to make it work. The city puts in $130 million into the organization. How do we make sure that we're getting return on our investment and that we're producing results, and that accountability measure is in place so that going forward, we can ensure that we are doing what we are setting out to do?
And we'll get to a lot of those specific issues that you mentioned, but I'm intrigued to hear more later about this October surprise you're planning for legislation. Now, one question, I mean, we will get to those issues. One thing I'm curious about is, and we'll ask you both, each of this, each, ask each of you this question. When you ran for office, Councilmember Wu, I think, last year, and Alexis, this year, how surprised were your family members and friends? How in care, is this in character with your entire professional life leading up to this? Did it surprise people when this came up? And we'll start with you, Councilmember Wu. How consistent is your recent political career with the rest of the previous parts of your life?
Oh, goodness. Well, I've always just been a small business owner, community advocate, bringing people together to affect change in our community. And I was really surprised to hear that a lot of people did not feel like they were being heard. And so my first foray, of course, was leading people who did not speak English, refugees, immigrants, into King County Council chambers, into city council chambers, people who have never seen these halls before, having them bring in and seeing all of the issues that come about that. There were not adequate translation. Translation only goes one way towards council members, not towards the community. We had no idea what was going on or about the political process. And so having to educate and having to work with people, and how do we get more involvement, especially, you know, and as you know, when it comes to voting and ballots, ballots are not translated, but the voter's guide is. And so a lot of, there's a lot of confusion there. So there's a lot more work we need to do, especially in our communities for refugees, immigrants, communities of color.
So were your family members or friends surprised when you decided to run for office? That's kind of the, that's the core question I'm asking.
They were very surprised, because I spent most of my career in journalism. I worked at King Five for 10 years. I worked at Fox Sports before it became Root. And I was, I loved journalism. I loved telling stories. I love digging down into the facts and research. I thought that was my career trajectory as, from a little kid, and so they were very surprised.
Okay. Alexis Mercedes-Rink, what about you?
Well, this is such a great question.
Oh, please, stop trying to flatter me. No, just.
I suppose so. It wasn't surprise, but the first question I got was, are you sure? From a lot of people, just because there's a number of challenges facing our city. But people have known me to be someone who has, who's not afraid to dive into challenging matters and issues and lead through hard moments. I've worked with a lot of folks around consensus building region-wide. I've done working in community organizing, but also bringing together municipalities under unanimous votes. So not surprised because people have seen how I don't shy away from hard issues and I'm willing to do the hard work to bring people together to make things happen. So less surprised, but more, you know, nerves for me saying, you know, this is going to be really hard, but we stand by you because we trust your approach and we trust that you're going to do good work and move with integrity.
Okay. Now, each of you have listed a number of issues that you're concerned with and that, you know, that inspired you to run and things you want to work on. If you had to pick one, though, what's the single most important issue on voters' minds, and what would you do as a member of the Seattle City Council to address that issue? And we'll start with you, Councilmember Wu. No, excuse me. We'll start with you, Alexis Mercedes-Rink.
Yeah, you know, I'll reflect what I hear at the doors, and it's public safety. Very second is housing affordability, but it's public safety is the number-one thing that I'm hearing at the doors at this time. And, you know, I've been clear from the beginning that we need to be building a public safety system that has a quick response and the right response for given scenarios across our city. I've read the mayor's police recruitment and hiring plan, and as that's cited in there, you know, in 2022, we had our tier-one response times at 10 minutes. And I've heard from community members that 10 minutes even sounds pretty short compared to what people's actual experiences have been when it comes to trying to call upon law enforcement. And our goal state is trying to get that call, response time down to seven minutes. And so how are we making sure that we scale across the board our first responder workforce from law enforcement, as well as alternative behavioral health response, fire, and emergency medical, while also working in tandem to make sure we find a good balance between accountability, support, and services, and doing what we can on the prevention front? So making sure that we are investing in gun violence prevention programs specifically. I'm endorsed by the Alliance for Gun Responsibility because they trust in my approach in wanting to invest in that area. And I'm also excited to partner with the state legislature so we can pass more common-sense gun legislation. And, I mean, lastly, I'd also say on this point that our communities are safest when they are healthy and housed. So making sure that we're investing in treatment on demand, as well as the affordable housing that we desperately need to make sure everybody's inside.
Councilmember Wu, same question for you. Number-one issue and what you'll do about it?
Yes, and without doubt, it's public safety. I mean, the cost of doing business is really high. We have to deal with broken windows. It's hard to retain a workforce, because people are afraid to come to work. My family members are afraid to go to the grocery store. Public safety really permeates every part of our lives. Our seniors are afraid to go to the park. And it's, it's really kind of changed how our lifestyle is the last couple of years post-pandemic. And I knocked on thousands of doors, and this is the number-one thing people tell me. And so a couple of things that I'm doing, I'm a realist, like I have a plan, a strategy, and these different steps that we're taking, that we're doing right now, I think it's building a strong foundational core for our future. I think this is also an area where, you know, my opponent and I differ the most in. Like, I support soda, I support soap. I supported the police union contract, because, you know, while we, our officers are getting paid 18th in the state, now they're in the top five, love to attract competitive wages, attract the best in the region. Also, we have expanded the care team, and I'm fighting to expand reach and lead. As I spoke about, we deliver care, Urban Family, the Southeast Safety Network. All these groups are doing amazing work in their communities. How can we make sure that they are well-funded and able to continue doing that work? So it is a well-balanced approach in terms of public safety, making sure that we are fully staffing our police department, as well as providing the alternatives to policing in the care team, the care team. Also, we have to look at our young people, our youth. How are we able to make sure that programming is available when it comes to community centers, late-night basketball, libraries, parks that are safe, and also entrepreneurship opportunities? I believe our small businesses are the heart and soul of our community. And how do we help more of these businesses come online? Many of my friends started in farmer markets, and they're enabled, or on online stores, and it was so exciting to see them go into a brick-and-mortar location. And so how do we provide more opportunities for entrepreneurship, for small businesses to grow, and to have opportunities to build out? I also believe it's about community empowerment. For instance, you know, we have a lot of block watches. My group, they're a total volunteer group. We go out every single week still. We go to 12th and Jackson, Third Pike and Pine. How do we empower community groups to go out there? And that's also providing the resources of who can they connect people to in terms of where can people go for shelter, who can they call someone's tenting down the street? I think that's also very important as well. And so I think it's a comprehensive plan. It's a comprehensive look. And I think it's based on slow increments of legislation that we're seeing now, based on what we have learned in the past. People are like, you are, you know, with the, I support the drug ordinance. So like, you know, you are perpetuating the war on drugs from the 60s. But, you know, as you can see, we've been engaged in drug ordinance for about a year, and there are a lot of barriers and issues, and something we'd like to revisit as well going forward. And so when we do pass legislation, we make sure that accountability part is in place and built in, where we can reassess and see something is working. If it's not working, let's try something different. But that is the most important part of all that we're doing.
I want to drill down on some of that public safety stuff in a moment, especially where you two differ in your approach and your beliefs, your values, or your, what you believe should be implemented. But one thing before we do that, I mean, this is a city council position, and a big part about being a city council member is the legislative process, you know, knowing when to compromise, how to compromise, how to persuade someone who's, might be hesitant to support something you're trying to promote. It's kind of a two-part question, and we'll start with Councilmember Wu. Tell me about your legislative experience or legislative style experience, and then about your approach to working with others, persuading, knowing when you give something up versus when you don't give something up. Give me kind of the, kind of the, pull the curtain back about legislation and compromise and your experience and what your philosophy is.
Yes, thank you. So I've been endorsed by all of the council members, except for one, the person who I ran against last year. And so I believe we have a great working relationship. I've been doing this job for the last eight to nine months and working collaboratively with my colleagues. We're all in person, five days a week. And so it's just been amazing hopping from office to office, sharing ideas, collaborating and chatting. We all differ in opinion, but, you know, in the end, we're all friends, basically. So I think making sure we build healthy relationships is really important. I have a good relationship with the mayor, and making sure that communication is ongoing. And, you know, there are a lot of times where, you know, power politics is not my style, where, you know, you're just, you're going head-on with somebody, and it's about hearing all the viewpoints, is making sure we're having all the stakeholders at the table before going forward. And, you know, today, I called a press conference, and for those of you who will not be able to attend, I'm announcing, you know, there's been a lot of violence after our nightclubs. And so we are announcing a stakeholders group to talk about possible solutions and suggestions, to hear from all sides of the story before proceeding on recommendations from the stakeholders group. Because, you know, people are dying in our after-hours nightclubs. We want to make sure they're safe, we're young people, they're safe going forward, and hoping the industry will be healthy. And so I think that's kind of my style, is how do you make sure all the voices are being heard? How do you bring everybody together to talk about possible solutions, and then working together in collaboration to come up with a possible piece of legislation led by community, informed by community before moving forward? And it's always a two-step process. There's, you know, we put together legislation, then, you know, budget is where we put our money where our mouth is, and how do we implement it?
All right. Alexis Mercedes-Rink, same question for you. Legislative style experience and your approach to persuasion, compromise, all that sort of stuff?
Yeah, I really appreciate this question. And, you know, as a graduate of the Evans School, I've had formal training in policy analysis and also working across stakeholders. And I've been able to put that training into practice in a few different arenas through different organizations and across the county. But most importantly, before really approaching, you know, any sort of legislative bodies, starting with first identifying who are our most affected partners here. I've really modeled in my career, nothing about us, without us. And so starting with, you know, who are going to be the folks that are most impacted in a given policy situation, whether it be small businesses, people experiencing homelessness, community-based organizations feeding our neighbors, what have, and then, of course, our neighbors. But with that training, you know, I've really taken the approach of bringing people around a table and also identifying, you know, what, what are the issues? Can we also be able to define our problem statement together? And using that as a starting place to say, are we even in agreement on what the problem is here? And then, from that point, getting, having a healthy conversation around where are we agreeing, where are we disagreeing, where is that middle zone? I think it's really important to understand fully where each of the partners is coming from, understand their constituencies, their concerns, who their bosses may be, and what their values are. And I've used this approach and had some really tremendous wins throughout the years. And so some of the organizations that I've worked with using this approach and had success includes the Sound Cities Association, where I worked at for a number of years. The Sound Cities Association is a membership organization of 38 cities within King County, and the organization represents all of the elected officials within those 38 cities. As you can imagine, folks across the political spectrum. And so my job at that organization was organizing caucuses of our members for regional boards and committees. And I'll just give an example to say, the Regional Affordable Housing Committee, as chaired by King County Councilmember Claudia Balducci, has an SCA caucus. And so in my caucus, I had eight members, each member from a different city, coming together to, and I would be supporting them and trying to help that group of electeds develop a position on something as it relates to affordable housing. And knowing where we agree and disagree is really an important part of that. But moving also into, you know, some of the successes I've had with this, you know, I was able to bring together the five North King County cities, Shoreline, Bothell, Kenmore, Lake Forest, Park, and Woodinville, with each of those cities unanimously agreeing, unanimously voting to enter into an agreement with King County Regional Homelessness Authority and with me in the work on that, to regionalize our response and join together to regionalize our response to homelessness. So we know homelessness is one of the toughest topics facing our community, but getting all five cities to vote unanimously to join with us in an approach, and that agreement, you know, brought half a million dollars under the purview of our work, to be able to advance it and move together, I think is a real testament to my approach of being able to bring people together around solutions. And the last thing I would note is then, being able to lead development on a countywide plan as well, and ultimately getting that plan through two separate boards, also with unanimous votes. So I have a unanimous vote record to my name through a few different entities now at this point, which I just think speaks to my ability to, you know, really put issues on the table and shepherd success, while also being able to do that while leading with the voices and perspectives of those who are most impacted.
All right. Let's talk about public safety some more and about the differences between the two of you, just to make it really clear. So where there are clear differences. And Councilmember Wu, you mentioned soda, the stay-out-of-drug area, and the soap stay-out of areas of prostitution ordinances. And this, we'll start with Alexis Mercedes-Rink. You tell me, where do you differ from Councilmember Wu in terms of your approach to public safety?
Yeah, you know, I think we've had a lot of great discourse in the past couple of weeks about, you know, soda and soap. And I think what is, there's a few things that are uniting our community in this moment, and that is, you know, these areas have been identified for a reason. We recognize that there are issues facing them, and it has created hardship in our communities. And I want to acknowledge the very legitimate concerns and frustrations of downtown residents, workers, and business owners with respect to street-level drug use. And also, I want to express concern that, you know, drawing a line on a map in itself doesn't fully, will not fully address the root causes of our crisis. I'm already hearing from folks on the ground that folks are just, you know, shifting over out of a soda zone. I worry about, a little bit about the messaging of this, that this legislation in itself will fix these larger problems, and what kind of message that that sends to the public. I really am mindful that we are in a place where we want to restore faith from the public in our government systems. And so really, what I'm bringing forward here, I want to say, we should be moving with urgency in these areas, because there is
Because there is an urgent need to be addressing the challenges here. Um, and
Just interrupting you now, is that a difference from your, from council member Wu? I mean, let's talk about the actual things that, that set you guys, make you guys, set you guys apart.
Yeah, and about what I was going to go into is I, I want to make sure we're bringing a really comprehensive approach. Um, doing a, a focused activation and really pairing these things with um, with resources. Um, with making sure that we are connecting with um, the organizations that, that we have been talking about, such as We Deliver Care, such as PDA, and bringing resources online to also balance, balance that. Um, so I think what, you know, I'm particularly interested in is a little bit more moving with a, a comprehensive approach. Um, bringing again, all of our, our partners to the table, folks that have been doing work to try and alleviate um, the challenges that we're seeing in these areas across the board. Um, just to make sure, you know, we are, are moving quickly, but also a little bit more comprehensively. Um, rather than taking this piecemeal approach that I think is setting some false expectations about what, what can be done. Um, I'm also thinking about with this, this approach, you know, um, the larger impact for our public safety system. Um, and you know, if, if we're implementing some of this legislation as written and trying to really live into that. Um, that I have some curiosity and questions about, you know, what this will mean for um, our overall response times, if we're deploying law enforcement to be consistently patrolling these areas, what that will do for our response times for other parts of the city that may not be in soda and soap zones. So I, I think um, the main difference here is just wanting to be more focused on, on a comprehensive solution, have the partners who have been doing the work at the table and in support of what solution we're coming with. But I want to be very clear that we need quick action and a focused activation to be able to really get, get to the root of alleviating some of the issues that we're seeing in these areas.
Council member Wu, I mean, you, Gazette, described the differences pretty well between you two on pub, terms of public safety?
Yes, I think there are a couple of differences in that sphere. Uh, the first one is experience. Um, I grew up here. I've seen how Little Saigon has changed four years ago. It was a thriving neighborhood area where people came from all over the state to go to shop at Bitwa, to shop at the grocery stores there. We had a pharmacy in that neighborhood. And then you see, but I, I invite everyone to drive by that area on your way home today and see what it looks like now. It's a hundred people spilling out into the streets. Hoy My Park just opened this past summer and it's, it's about thirty, forty people engaging fentanyl drug use at all hours of the day. I drive by at ten PM at night on my way home from the restaurant and, and it's, it's quite, um, I get emails and letters in my office from residents, from small businesses who are just desperate for something to be done. Um, and so I have a from the ground up approach, um, based on real life experiences and being on the trenches, boots in the ground and trying to help people connect to resources, talking to people there. Um, and also third Pike and Pine, similar with all the businesses and the residents there, people are just desperate for action. They want something to be done. Um, I, I think my, you know, my, how we differ is that my opponent has a policy down approach. Um, another thing we differ on, I'll be very clear, all these votes, soda, soap, the um, competitive wages, civilization of the contract, the drug ordinance, these are all things my opponent's on record for saying she would not, she would not have voted for. And uh, my record is obviously very clear that I did vote for these things. Um, and then as you will see in the budget process, I will be fighting for that, to maintain that two million dollars in the budget for um, people who are exploited by the sex trade. I'll be fighting for lead, reach, We Deliver Care, for all of these groups, for a more balanced approach. I also voted for the expansion of the care team. And in a couple of weeks, and I'm very excited to announce um, a citywide initiative, very slim to what I've done in my neighborhood that's volunteer-based. Um, and that's community escalation teams. How do we connect um, and empower our neighbors to do that outreach and engagement if someone's tenting down the street? How do we empower people to know like, hey, can I talk to this person? Um, how can I refer the resources, resources are available that I can help connect them to? Or like if I connect them to the, the lead um, representative of that area? Or the, who in the care team can I talk to? And I think that's how to connect neighborhoods, how do we um, empower people? And so I think it's a, it's a comprehensive approach, just stuff I'm working on right now and things I'm really passionate about and work I have been doing, am doing and continue to do.
I want to move to downtown revitalization. Oh, do you have, do you want to, oh, a rebuttal? Okay.
I know it's not a debate. I just
No, no, it's, 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 it's a, it's a vigorous conversation. Go ahead.
Appreciate it. I just, I just don't want to be mischaracterized on, on some of this since um, my opponent just mentioned, you know, that I've come out against a, a number of things that, that she's listed. Um, of which, you know, I want to clarify that I, I haven't come out against the, the hiring bonuses per se. But rather I've been talking about, how do we make sure that we are seeing results from the increased amount of money going into our hiring bonuses? I want to make sure, especially if we're in a limited budget environment, you know, we are fully expending our, our police budget. And I want to make sure that we're seeing some results of having quality officers come, come on board. And I actually have put forward a number of ideas of how we can make sure that we are um, trying to make, trying to make sure that we, we are hiring solid officers and how we can improve our recruitment efforts. And I have some ideas on, on that point. But I, I do want to be clear too that, you know, yes, I would have voted no on the soda and soap legislation as written because I think it's a a false promise, truthfully. And you know, I was just canvassing out in Green Lake, for example, and talking to a resident who said that's his number one issue because he's concerned that um, the challenges that we, we are seeing on Aurora will move into his neighborhood and what that will mean for, for his community. And so he's kind of bracing for that impact. So I, I just want to be, be clear and clarify my, my point here that it's a matter of, you know, taking a, a comprehensive approach. Um, and not just moving uh, the issues and challenges that we're seeing in these areas around to other parts of the city. And we're being honest with the public about what we can do.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, really quickly, I ask those same questions because soda and soap has been done in the past. And while this new soda and soap is different, I also heard concerns about people were worried that these areas of concern move into their neighborhoods or would move and, and, and be um, an issue in their areas. So I spoke to a lot of officers about their experience previously of soda and soap. And you know, we base soda and soap on data, um, and long-term data on nine-one-one calls that were reported in these areas that were drug-related. Um, and so talking to many officers who, who have seen soda and soap previously before, five years ago, before um, that, that was um, I guess, done away with by the council based on studies on the East Coast. Um, but basically, police said that they did not see that people moved. They said that, you know, these zones were there for a reason. Based on data, people stayed in these zones and if they did move, they moved within a block away and officers were able to see them. Um, and so they did not, officers told me that this was not a concern of theirs. This is not something they saw in the previous soda and soap zones. Um, and as you can see currently, um, at 12th and Jackson, 12th um, and Weller or Third Pike and Pine, like while people did move around, they did not stray far from these zones. And these zones, um, if you look at the map, um, they're, they're pretty large areas. And so I think, you know, we also built into place um, by council member Strauss, a good and robust um, accuracy, looking at the results and looking at what's happening and how can we um, shift and, you know, basically um, move forward with this. So we're excited to see the results of it. Um, we're, we're now seeing the results of the two ordinance from a year ago. And so I'm confident that this current council is, is good at um, accountability.
Let's talk about downtown revitalization. Um, you know, obviously the pandemic, it's, it's sort of feels like we're in a post, post pandemic phase right now. I mean, there's sort of the, the immediate threat is, is passed, but obviously the, the, the damage wrought over those multiple years, it's still visible if you walk around. Although there's good signs, you know, PCC is coming back, you know, there's the lighting on Third Avenue, there's, there's all sorts of, I was downtown, excuse me, downtown late one night last week and it's, there's definitely, it feels like it's back in a lot of ways. As a city council member, um, what will you do to support the continued revitalization of downtown Seattle? Let's start with council member Rink. Excuse me, Alexis Mercedes Rink.
Perhaps prophetic. Um, I can only hope. Um, you know, downtown is the vibrant arts and commercial core of all of Western Washington. And city government needs to be a partner in making it a great place to live, work and play. And this means continued public activations during our summer months in downtown's marquee open spaces, Westlake, Occidental and soon waterfront parks, while also taking advantage in the winter months around indoor spaces through public agreements like Ben Arroyo Hall, Cenaroma and the Convention Center. Um, I think we can also be really focused on how are we supporting and lifting up and elevating our arts and culture within downtown? And you know, I'm still digging into the, the budget as released to understand what's been proposed as, as well. I'd love to be able to work with you all to understand how, um, what's been proposed in the mayor's budget may complement, support and work for um, downtown revitalization. But I think the city can be doing a lot more to make sure that we are, you know, just for example, like aligning permitting and code to make sure that we support our creative economy. Um, how do we make sure that we um, continue to activate vacant storefronts? While also working to make sure that we improve access and connection for artists. So we can really have a robust creative economy and cross-sector partners to make sure that that's happening. Um, and making sure that we, you know, Seattle remains and continues to be a world-class city with top-tier arts and cultural institutions.
Council member Wu?
Give the question, please.
Uh, with in terms of downtown revitalization and you know, we're, we're post, post pandemic, there's lots of good signs, there's still some, obviously some challenges. What, as a city council member, what can you do to ensure downtown's continued revitalization?
Yes, I think we have a very cool opportunity with FIFA soccer coming in twenty twenty-six. Um, learning from um, MLB uh, week from last year. How do we help draw all of the tourists and businesses, business towards the rest of downtown and also to our, our neighborhoods? Um, I think we need to reimagine downtown as um, as arts and culture hub. Um, we have the Historic Theater District there. Um, in my committee, the Arts and Culture Committee, we've had a lot of roundtable discussions of the creative economy, inviting offices to come development as well as arts and culture. To talk about some ideas and strategies and, and how, and what people want to see happen. Uh, I met with um, residents on Third Pike and Pine with businesses to talk about what they would like to see. And how do we activate storefronts? Um, and, and how do we, you know, I, I always talk about, you know, the reactivation, the storefront plan from a couple of years ago that was done in partnership with Sun Pike. How are we able to do that again this year or going forward and activating these storefronts and making them healing spaces, galleries, art and culture hubs? To help people on Third Pike and Pine, um, engage in their passion or help people heal in that area. Um, I, I love growing up, having the downtown free zone um, on transit. Um, and remember going, taking the bus to, to Macy's or Nordstrom's. When I was a kid, my mom to shop on the weekends. And um, how do we, you know, losing stores like Nike Town, you know, there are not very many cities with a Nike Town. How do we um, try to get some of those businesses back to draw people back to the downtown core? Um, we recently voted from office to residential conversion. So how do we streamline permitting processes for that? Um, as well as how do we streamline permitting process for small businesses to be able to open quickly? I know it takes two years, sometimes to get a permit, attending improvement is kind of tough. Um, so how do we make that happen quicker so people can open faster? So I think it's, it's using a whole host of things, um, as I've worked and what has not worked. But I agree, something needs to be done now. I mean, within a one-block radius of my family's restaurant, I know six other restaurants who are for sale and are going to close at the end of the year. Um, I also know four buildings, um, that are about the size of a block within the Chinatown International, they're, they're for sale. And you know, this is quite distressing um, to hear. And so I'm working really quickly um, to see how do we mitigate that? So we don't see gentrification, displacement. I mean, we've experienced that in every single neighborhood and it looks different in every single neighborhood. But how do we address these concerns before they happen? Um, and it'd be, it's amazing here, PCC is coming in. Um, you know, we were, especially some neighborhoods, we love to have a corner hardware store. We love to have pharmacies in place that are not currently there. So how do we track these businesses? How do we retain them? How do we get people to come into downtown? Um, the waterfront um, overlook walk is opening at the end of this week. Um, or is it next week? But I'm really excited to have these open spaces that will draw people that feel safe um, and inviting. And it's just really exciting that all these places will be online ahead of FIFA soccer. But you know, it's not just FIFA soccer. You know, we also attract six Super Bowls worth of people every single season at the Fifth Avenue, the Paramount Theater. So how do we continue drawing locals every single year into our downtown core to enjoy a show or the symphony and then stay and have dinner and then maybe go shopping? Um, so it's, it's part of a plan to get more foot traffic. Um, and the more foot traffic we have, I think, will help with other things like public safety and housing.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned the waterfront. I mean, that's a huge public investment, private investment, decades in the making, half a century in the making, really. And it will have impact, positive impact on the city for a couple, for centuries to come. I mean, it's, that's a major investment. And I'm a big fan of Seattle history. I love the World's Fair. I love how that catalyzed public and private investment to put on a six-month carnival sixty-one years ago. But to also create this amazing civic infrastructure that I'm a huge fan of, that has been reimagined multiple times, continues to be this vibrant place. Do you have any ideas in your back pocket about reaching for something big? Like is, is it time for Seattle to do World's Fair-style thinking again, to do something that catalyzes us for the coming century, the ways the World's Fair did sixty-one years ago? Uh, let's start with you, council member Wu.
Yes, I, the first thing that popped in my, my, my space needle thinking, and I always use that term in relation to the World's Fair. I think yes, and I mean, we, we've hosted many amazing festivals. Um, every year we have Comic-Con and we also have um, PAX. We've hosted large-scale events. We had MLB Week, we had AHL, um, Winterfest and we are, will soon have FIFA Soccer. And so I think, you know, we're a world-class city. We deserve world-class services. And you know, we may come a long way, but we have a long ways to go. And so how um, do we continue that, um, especially with tourism, a careership season time? A sea fair draws thousands of people here every single year. Um, and I, I live um, in Raynor Valley and yes, they fly right above me, but I love it still. Um, and so how do we continue that trajectory in attracting people from all over the world um, to come visit? And that, like you said, is partnerships um, with private public groups, with tourism, um, Visit Seattle especially. Um, and how do we track people from, from Asia, from, you know, Europe, from all over? Um, and so I think it's also really important, we're working partnership with, you know, our marketing teams to do that.
Okay, and Alexis Mercedes Rink, what about you?
Yeah, you know, I, one of the things that I love most about this city is the incredible vision um, that, that we see show up um, across sectors and, and in folks. And I think we have such a unique opportunity, being a community that has brilliance around us, brilliant innovators and a real desire to, to lead. Um, we've led it in a number of different fronts. And you know, I, I'd be remiss to say if, you know, uh, Seattle is the Emerald City, I think we should take a moment to live into that more, which is why I'm just off the bat, like truly thinking in a visionary sense. It'd be amazing if we, we start thinking about how does our city continue to honor that promise? We're a very green city. Um, we, we know that we have work to do to make sure that we're increasing our tree canopy and still we're, we're a very green city. So how can we pioneer and expand our, our green infrastructure work? I think there's, I know there's amazing technology, uh, work happening here on the energy front. Um, to be, be changing, um, you know, our, our energy systems. Um, with any hope we'll also be protecting, you know, the Climate Commitment Act as well. I'll, I'll make my opinion there known. Um, but I think there's real promise and opportunity to, you know, step into a World's Fair space around how is Seattle leading the way in, in a, you know, green energy, green infrastructure movement? And weaving in, you know, also the, the arts and a culture of arts and culture elements of this as well. And again, honoring that promise of being the Emerald City and continuing to champion that and setting the stage for, and a, an example to the world of what it, what does it look like to be a truly green city?
All right, well, as we talk blue sky, now let's bring everything crashing back to earth with talk about fiscal responsibility and the budget and everything. Um, given the fragile state of downtown revitalization, um, do you agree that the city should prioritize the efficient use of, of existing spending before imposing new taxes or increasing existing ones? And we'll, we'll start with you, Alexis Rink.
Yeah, well, as a government budget professional and, um, you know, I was working at the UW as the Assistant Director of Policy Planning and State Operations. And having worked within local governments, I just have to say, off the bat, I firmly believe in fiscal prudence, strong bond ratings and diligent oversight. All public budget discussions should begin with a thorough accounting of service obligations and honest evaluation of our revenue streams. And if there is a gap, all resources need to be on the table, including reforms, consolidations of redundancies and critically evaluating underutilized or inefficient services. However, no public official can in any good conscience categorically rule However, no public official can in any good conscience categorically rule out seeking new progressive revenue if our essential public service is on their line and would deteriorate without further investment. And I believe Seattle should aspire to be the best-run municipal government in the country and deliver on our critical public services that downtown depends on. And all tools need to be on the table to maintain that commitment to the public. And of course, we're all digesting the mayor's budget, analyses are underway to understand the impact of cuts. We may agree or disagree about what is being prioritized, but I'm the, the kind of person and the kind of leader that is ready to dive into those discussions and have a realistic conversation to make sure that we are balancing both fiscal health for the city, but also honoring, you know, the tremendous amount of needs across our, our communities.
Okay, Councilmember Wu?
Yeah, so very basically, I look at the budget as in the eyes of a small business owner. You know, we have to make a work, we can't just continue to go out, ask for more money. I also helped, you know, lead a redevelopment of the Lisa Hotel, so working with millions of dollars in terms of how do we do a build-out with limited resources for a family of color in an area where it's, it's tough to even get a loan or get insurance. So these are all lenses I bring into my work. The mayor just released his budget yesterday. It's a balanced budget. And, you know, he had to make some tough decisions and we just spent the last five months evaluating our current budget and how we got to where we are. And now we are, now as the city council, we are currently doing the work as the oversight body to further our priorities. I'm very excited to see in the mayor's budget that there was public safety and addressing homelessness were the top priorities there. And so how do we make sure we continue that? So I, you know, my opponent will, wants to champion progressive revenue and, and taxing people who make higher incomes. But, you know, as you saw with the Progressive Revenue Task Force, there were 12 recommendations and 10 of them were legal because of state law. The two that were currently legal are, are jumpstart or things that we're currently doing. And so, you know, I always say that, you know, I think we have to advocate in the state level, if people want more progressive revenue, that's where it's done. But right now within the city of Seattle, we really have to work within our means. We have to really, you know, it's going to be a lot of tough decisions, but we need to make sure we save the essential and basic resources that people need. And then look at, at areas where we have redundancies. I mean, you will see in the budget that there are layoffs, you know, the mayor instituted a hiring freeze beginning of the year. So many of these positions have already gone unfulfilled. So makes it easier, but you know, we're looking at every single position to see if those are, are positions we need. And most of them are inward-facing, so the public will not see any positions that were outward-facing be eliminated. We're also looking at things that are essential services, especially shelter space that will be maintained. So I'm excited to continue doing that work. So right now the, the budget is balanced and right now we are going to be looking at priorities and seeing if those were adequately funded. We may be shifting things around, but it does not look like we will have to resort to, to more taxes.
Okay, now we're almost out of time, reaching the top of the hour here in just a few minutes. Have a couple of just like short answer questions for you that they, you tend to find in sort of debates. Not, I don't want to call it the lightning round, I think that's been used too much. First, just really quickly, and we'll, and we'll start with you, Councilmember Wu, your favorite place to eat downtown?
Oh my gosh, I'm biased. I have to name my family's restaurant.
One sentence answer.
Within Cow Cow.
Okay, same for you, Alexis Mercedes Rink?
Oh gosh, favorite place to eat downtown? Oh gosh, El Baracho.
Also, short answer question here, your favorite distinct, distinctive spot in downtown Seattle? Where you know, when you stand there, you're not in Denver, you're not in San Francisco, you're not in New York, but you know you're in Seattle and you couldn't find that spot anyplace else. Could be commercial, private, whatever, just what is that spot? Councilmember Wu?
Westlake Park Waterfall, I remember as a kid running through there in a skirt and trying to dodge the water.
Okay, Alexis Mercedes Rink?
Thank you, that's a second and Stewart, the new art studio space that was stood up that I think is an amazing example of revitalization of the downtown space. It's now this amazing gallery. I recently came to and it's my new favorite spot and I think just a real success point, the bright spot that we should focus on, you know, replicating that success.
All right, now, I don't, I don't want to have a traditional closing statement, but I want to give you each about, let's say, let's call it a minute to tell me your hopes and expectations for the next 12 months in downtown Seattle. And we'll start with Councilmember Wu.
Yes, my hopes and expectations for next 12 months are going into the holiday season. Christmas tree lighting is one of my most favorite times in downtown, carolers and people just gathered there. I hope to see the things that we're seeing on Third Pike and Pine slowly get relieved. Hoping to bring people inside, so people are not outside. I think it's a pain to allow someone to die outside. And so I'm hoping that, you know, it's not going to be fast change. It's, takes time to build something, it's easier to burn something. And I want to build. And so I'm hoping to address public safety issues within downtown. I'm hoping to bring in more people and have a vibrant downtown where people are shopping and eating and attending theater. And especially since, you know, we just are finishing up our, our tourist visitor cruise season. Now it's, it's about locals and having locals come in and experience the amazing downtown that we have and that I remember growing up in. I think my dream is to see an exciting waterfront.
That's a minute right there. Sorry, hate to do that. So out of character for me in this, in this conversation. Alexis Mercedes Rink, you've got one minute to share your hopes for the next 12 months in downtown Seattle.
Absolutely. I'm optimistic about what, what can happen in the next 12 months, just seeing some of the immediate change pieces that have come into play. I think seeing the revitalization of, of arts and culture, you know, we've seen increased investment from the Ford culture. For Ford culture and I saw a recent announcement around the infusion of funding also into the arts. But I think it would be incredible to continue to see our arts and culture scene grow. I think having felt presence and having folks go to downtown, being community, having a good time will, will change the energy of the space. And it will continue to grow, we'll continue to see the activation of more spaces. And just really continue that trajectory of making downtown a space where people can go to have a good time. Where people can go to be able to also just, just see the beauty that all of our city has to hold. And people, of course, can live good, healthy lives and have all of their needs met. I want to make sure that downtown is a space where families with young kiddos can feel comfortable and, and safe and good.
That's about your minute right there. I want to thank our city, Seattle City Council, position eight candidates, Alexis Mercedes Rink and Councilmember Tanya Wu. I want to thank everyone for joining us today for DSA Virtual Access. I want to thank, as always, a fabulous DSA staff, John Scholes, Sally Wright, James Sito, Lacey McKeever. Please watch your inbox for information about the next installment of DSA Virtual Access in October. And please vote on or before November 5th. Turnout in August was only 40%. That's terrible. Let's get the people to engage and do the very least responsible, most responsible part of democracy of voting for every election. Until then, I'm Felix Banel on behalf of DSA. Thanks again for joining us this morning and we will see you downtown.